...meeting, the October 17th meeting of the council. So can we have the pledge to the flag, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Councilmember Dobie.
Here.
Councilmember McKeehan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Here.
Mayor Woodmore.
Here. Okay. The first order of business is to adopt the resolution of an agreement with George Roderick, appointing Mr. Roderick as the position of city manager. Do I have a motion on the agenda items, please?
I'd like to make a motion and I'd like to make one correction to the resolution.
I have questions.
Oh, okay. No problem. Sorry. Let's have the discussion.
The correction to the resolution, is this my icon? The corrections to the resolution is that in section two, the temporary 25 percent acting behavior differential, we've asked that it be changed to be approved by resolution number 12-21 is hereby canceled and the city court's salary shall return to its original base rate. So that it is a clear audit trail. I think the original resolution in the packet did not have that clarity.
Good point. Bill, you okay?
Sure.
Jerry?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I've been asked by several residents some questions that I'm not able to answer that I'd like to direct to the october to maybe found upon a little bit before you get your contract here. In particular is the question been asked about the travel, temporary travel on the living allowance $2,500 that starts on the date of hire until June 30th, 2013, or until permanent relocation to the Atherton area. The question's asked, well, why is this necessary when the town is in the middle of the park? Why do you want this? In the contract, the house has been offered in their cost. The question is, why, why do you want this?
And Mr. Roderick requested the allowance due to the fact that he has some temporary situation with moving down immediately and he'll be commuting for a period of time. We're hoping that it's going to be shorter versus more than later, but he has a house he still needs to sell and until he can clear up his affairs up in Marin County, he's going to be commuting for a good deal of time, but, but he's also considered or indicated that he would move some furniture down as soon as possible without specifying a time so he could occasionally attend late night meetings or committee meetings, et cetera, and not have to make the long drive back. So in lieu of the fact that he was going to be doing this extra commuting and still maintaining a household up north, he requested this and we thought that it was a fair, a fair settlement.
Okay, thank you. Another question regarding vacation hours. It appears that throughout the start, that 40 hours of vacation time will have, will be credited to, to his account to be in the bank.
Right.
Along with that, the accrual of 80 hours during the year. This 40 hour at the outset, is that, is that something we've done in the past?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, let me jump in. That was exactly what, I think it was 40 hours was given to the chief of police. The concept being, somebody comes from out of town and they have years of seniority there, they come here with zero, they may have vacations planned, things like that. It's kind of customary to give them a bank of some time so that when they do take time, it's not a penalty to them.
And also, Mr. Roderick had indicated that he does have some things planned over the next couple of months and he would not have accrued enough time and we didn't think that it was necessary to ask him right off the bat to take off without paying.
In one section, it talks about the number of hours of vacation that can be approved. It talks about 80 hours for the first two years, three to eight, eight years, 120 hours accrual, and 160 hours excess of seven years. I don't quite understand that three to eight years and excess of seven years.
It should say, three to seven years and excessive seven years. It's a typographical error. It's the first I've ever made.
Duly noted.
And the final one is a smaller question in regards to cellular phone allowance, $100 for actual cost. Seems to me that we pay the cellular phone bill for all of our employees. What's, what's the special deal here that spelled this out as something, something extra?
He requested the cellular phone because he's going to be doing the commuting. He also uses his PDA for, for doing a lot of push communications out to websites and we thought it was appropriate because he asked for that. We do give a phone to, at a very reduced rate, for example, the chief. But in this case, Mr. Roderick has some very specific and high end data needs and so that's why we put the number at 100. He actually had asked for a little higher, but we said 100 and we said that it would be not to exceed so that if he doesn't take that expense or use that full expense for whatever reason, the city, it wasn't just going to be an allowance add-on.
Okay. One, one last question here. Were there any implied promises made concerning the six month performance review that there would be a salary increase at that time?
No. Any other questions? Comments? George, would you like to make any comments with regards to the questions that were asked?
I don't think the council's actually going to be quite prepared.
I think the only, I think the only clarification that needs to be made, made is with regard to Jerry's first question. It says that the manager shall receive a monthly living and travel allowance of $2,500 from the date of hire or until June 30th, or until the manager relocates to the Atherton area, whichever comes first. So it's not guaranteed until June 30th.
Right. We're hoping it comes sooner rather than later.
Yes.
Then it's anticipated.
It's anticipated.
It will come sort of rather than later.
Okay. So can we have a motion?
I'm so.
Oh, any public comments on the city manager's contract? Seeing none, then we'll come back. Can we have a motion then to approve? Can you second?
I made the first motion.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. All right. So Jim, would you like to second?
I'll say.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
So at this time then, we would like to administer the oath of office.
Go back to my.
All right. Okay. So raise your right hand, please. Aye.
Aye.
Your name?
George Roderick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the state of California.
And the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of California.
And the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, George. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I would like to thank Teresa Del Sandman for a tremendous job as the interim city manager during a very, very difficult period. She's done a wonderful job, worked her tail off, and I would say she deserves a tremendous sort of thanks from all of us.
Well, I personally would like to say thank you. It's great to be here. I have followed Atherton, as some of you know, for the last several months in search of this opportunity and it's good to be here. And I'd like to introduce the, the better half of my world, Felicia, on the end down there. She came to say hello this evening. Without her support, I wouldn't be here right now.
Thank you, George. Okay. The next item on the agenda is proclamation and the first one is for Shirley Carlson. Okay. Okay. So the council would like to recognize Shirley Carlson. Whereas Shirley Carlson served on the Parks and Recreation Commission since December 2002 and as its chair effectively running the meetings and facilitating discussions, Mrs. Carlson was observant and always informed before the meetings and truly had the concerns about what was best for Holbrook Palmer Park. And whereas Shirley Carlson has planned and organized and chaired numerous community-wide events hosted by the Atherton Dames, including insisting, assisting to get the Bill Conwell Memorial Bridge installed at the park, helping to dig holes, to plant trees, always had a visible presence at the Easter egg head, excuse me, Easter egg hunt, both in setup, cleaning, as well as collecting fees. And whereas Shirley Carlson is a current member of the Holbrook Palmer Park Foundation while serving as its president and continues to stay active, involved in the Atherton Dames, particularly with fundraising. And where Mrs. Carlson has received numerous certificates of appreciation from Atherton for her commitment to the town and serving in the general plan committee, the tree committee, and the waste reduction committee. Whereas Ms. Carlson began volunteering her time at a time when Atherton was having a hard time recruiting volunteers and has become instrumental in engaging other residents in serving on town committees. And where Shirley Carlson has mentored and coached a number of other community leaders that helped them make, help make them successful in achieving their goals for the town. Now therefore, by their virtue and authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Atherton, I do hereby commend Ms. Shirley Carlson and express my sincere appreciation for her service to this community witnessed today. Thank you very much. Okay. We had a second proclamation, which I won't read, is for Willie Mays and we'll get this to him or if he decides, if he can come and today's a Giants game, of course, if he's available to come to council meeting at a future date, we can present it at that time. Don't forget that he's being recognized by the San Mateo History Museum next month and I think that the information on, on that dinner is posted on our website. Okay. Now we go to public comments. So this is reserved for items that are not on the agenda. So if you would like to step forward, please make comments known. Thank you.
John Sanders, 156 Hawthorne Drive. It is my great pleasure as president of the Friends of the Atherton Library to announce a program that's coming up and we'd like children of all ages to attend and that includes all of us, I hope. It's the Lucky Diaz Musical Performance Group coming up from LA. They're stopping here on their way to San Francisco and we are going to welcome them Saturday, October 27th at 2:00 PM. You're free to wear costumes since it's so close to Halloween. We're going to have scary story and then we're going to have a musical performance. This group has been voted number one by Parents Magazine. They've had a number one children's album. They have had outstanding reviews from the Chicago Tribune, Parents Choice, CBS, USA Today, et cetera. So we hope that you can all make time on October 27th, that's Saturday, at 2:00 PM for some fun in the park at Holbrook Palmer Park Pavilion. Thank you. It's a free program. Bring your grandchildren and children.
I'm Bonnie Mays from the City of San Jose. So I'm here on behalf of Carl Guadino from the Silicon Valley Leadership Group to invite you to a fabulous charity event that we have on Thanksgiving Day called the Turkey Trot. It's the eighth year. We aspire to raise $700,000 for three wonderful charities, which are the Children's Health Initiative, the Second Harvest Food Bank, and the Housing Trust of Santa Clara County. It's a great event. This year, we're going to have 25,000 people. Last year, we had 22,000 people in the City of San Jose and we'd love to see you come. For all of you, we have a competition. It's called the Mayor's Cup and you're an extra small city, so you're in the extra small city category and you get points if your mayor, city council, planning commissioner, city manager can come and we'd love to have a few of you represented at the Turkey Trot. I've left you some brochures there and I hope, you had about 60 community members attend last year, so it's, it's been pretty successful. And the other thing I'd like to invite you to is as a guest of ours to our annual luncheon, which is going to take place on November 2nd with Governor Jerry Brown. It's at the Santa Clara Convention Center and we'd love for any of you to come as our guest. So I will email you tomorrow and if any of you are interested, we'd love to have you attend. So on behalf of the Silicon Valley Leadership Group, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
My name is Walter Sleeth and I live at 227 Catalpa Drive. Mr. Mayor and fellow council members, the new Atherton Library is the first new public building project to be realized in over 50 years and we now have the opportunity with Measure F to define what and how we build for our future. While I understand there are differences of opinion on the matter, I do think it important that the discussion focus on facts. I would like to summarize the facts. All five members of the council authorized a serious study for our new library and its location in June 2010. All five members of the council then followed through and appointed eight diverse residents to act as a recommending body to the council to oversee the design and construction of our new library. In April 2011, all five members approved the public process, process and consultant contract with Group Four to conduct the formal planning process. This process entailed a series of public workshops and focus group meetings, all of which were well advertised. Complaining about the lack of a master plan is a red herring. All five council members approved the planning process for the library. It included studies of town center sites and various sites in Holbrook Palmer Park. In effect, a master plan has been completed. Opponents don't agree with the findings and therefore fault the process and propose wasting time and tax dollars on another planning process. Fortunately, there are only six mature trees on the proposed site, all of which can be preserved. The library is, and always has been, a county library and is planned to accommodate the community of library users served since 1929. The town determines the configuration of the building going forward and will continue to own and control the building and the park. The traffic issues are similar wherever the new library is located. All the intersections require safety improvements irrespective of the library. Evening classes, events, and meetings currently take place in the park. The town will continue to define the operating hours. The town police chief confirms that police service requirements for the library remain the same. The library, its final state, will occupy less than 1% of the entire park and will not interfere with any recreational activity currently taking place in the park. The operating plan shows that the library fund has funds to construct the library and operate the library with extended hours and wonderful programs for many years to come. A new library in the park will benefit our entire community, both adults and children. Save the town money that could be used to maintain and enhance other town services and it can be built on a site that won't reduce our park's open space. I appreciate the opportunity to address the council. Thank you.
Oh, okay. You're running the time. I didn't know that. My name is Ann McNertney and I live at 1 Watkins Avenue. And as you can see from the correspondence, starting in July 20th, I wrote a letter to the chief of police and the city attorney asking them to investigate certain actions by Ms. McKeehan regarding the expenditures without competitive bids and in the investigation of the Environmental Protection Committee and violations of the Brown Act. My understanding about the almanac is that there is also, was a time limit of the guest opinion of McKeehan that was due on Friday. However, the YouTube video by Woodmore referred to it a week later. It seems to me that there is again some conversations, inappropriate conversations between Mayor Woodmore, Councilwoman Dobie, and Councilwoman McKeehan regarding the outsourcing of the police and the articles that appeared in 1010 almanac and 1017. I think that the scare tactics that Ms. McKeehan has, I'd like to ask the city attorney when he's going to respond to my request for an investigation of the improprieties that have been going on for quite a long time. And I suspect that the articles in the almanac will prove to be another violation of the Brown Act done by the three, two majority, the three being the ones I'm talking about. You know, if your kid, if a water, if a water department endorses some kind of motion or measure on the ballot, they don't cut off your water. I think these scare tactics about the police giving everybody equally a questionnaire and the, the sort of sleazy comments by Mr. Sleeth are alliteration there, perhaps, Mary. And it's just, it's just outrageous to say that we're living in a police state and that the police are going to intimidate people who they don't support. It's awful.
Any other public comments?
I'm Mary Sweeney and I live on Irving Avenue and I'm a library user and I'm very much in favor of Measure F in supporting the library. There are funds for a library. There's a glorious location for one. Approvals have been received, sought and received and I think the idea of a new state-of-the-art library in Atherton is a very exciting one and I think one very appealing to children because it's cool and they're right. It is cool. As a library user, I am very enthused about the prospect that we're so fortunate to have a library at all and to have funds to build a new one and a splendid new one at that. I hope that you all come to the library now to see what it looks like. I, I'm there frequently and I don't know that I've seen many of you there when I'm there, but I'm sure you've all seen how it is and it is a quaint and lovely space until, you know, the library, until the library roof falls in one day when there's an earthquake and that's a problem that we can address immediately with a new library. So I hope favorable consideration is given to going, going ahead with that project. Thank you very much.
Any other public comments? John? Lou, is the speaker working great?
Wonderful.
Okay.
John Bregero, Stockbridge Avenue. I've been coming to these meetings since Malcolm Dudley was in high school. In the early eighties and I've seen all, many of these elections, I voted in all the elections. In the election in 1996, I have documents about it. They were so happy because they had an election in Atherton because the first time in 10 years, they hadn't had one for, it's 86. Everybody was just taking in who applied for the job. I've been, this last year, I could go to 80% of the meetings. There's two people in the room running for office, two ladies. In the year, I've only seen the other candidates once and maybe twice. Here's the most important meeting before the election. We just installed a new town manager, one of the most important jobs in the, in the town. We've discussed this, we've discussed many items here. Where are these people? It's like Claude Rains, the invisible man, Min, actually. But I just want to commend the two ladies for, I've seen, of course, Ms. Lewis here is all the time and Ms. Cooperman is here all the time. But I just want to tell you, some of you voters in this town, if you're voting for these people, you have signs out front, bring them around so we can see who they are.
John?
John.
John, just to make a point, the other candidate, Carrie Leest, is here. He's at the door right now. Yes. So.
We'll introduce him to the town manager.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll close public comments and we'll move to the agenda items. First up is the city manager's report, so George?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. One of the first things I wanted to point out here was the holiday party. The mayor came up with an idea to have a holiday party this December. The intended date is December 12th, but it's not budgeted, so what staff's plan is to do is to bring back a potential cost for the party at the November meeting and the council can approve a budget resolution if we intend to hold the party, but I just wanted to make that mention this evening.
And it would be for all volunteers and if you want to go ahead and get as many people involved from the town as possible.
Correct. With that, you have the written report from the various different departments and either I or Teresa or any member of the departments would be happy to answer any questions you might have on those items.
I'd like to note that the project list was sent out to council members prior to the meeting. Something I had been requested of the city manager office for some time. Thank you very much for getting initial list out. I think it's really important to get that HR policy done and approved at the December meeting. That's been pending for, I don't know, three years, four years, a good long while and we need to get that, get that done. Also, Mike Kowalski put out a memo to the council members dated October the 10th about a meeting between town staff and Caltrans. I think that's a very important step. I know the mayor sent a letter to Caltrans trying to get their attention to the safety problems we have along El Camino. And I would urge the city manager to include in, in the monthly report, an update on the progress as to what's happening with El Camino and many other meetings that take place and help set our expectations of what we should see in ways of improve safety along there. Also noted in the, in the city manager's report that there were 114 school incidents the police department responded to in the month. Two schools, MA and Selby, accounted for over half of the total for the nine schools. I don't know what the trend is over the past year, but I think that's something that concerns me and ought to concern all of us. and ought to concern all of us. And hopefully, there's some active program underway at both MA and Selby in particular to address whatever is causing those incidents to appear so often. Thank you.
Will?
I would just like to add to Councilmember Carlson's comment about El Camino. When I was mayor, I met with Supervisor Semidion and Caltrans for quite a long meeting, and we had several other representatives there at the same time about safety on that part of El Camino. They did, I did ask them to bring the State Highway Patrol there because to supplement our police services, and I think they did for a while. But at that point, we also asked for a lot of other things, including lighting across walks because there had been two accidents prior to that. And at that time, they said they didn't have any money. Well, you know, they have a lot of money to do lots of things, including $90 billion for high-speed rail. So I would just say that somewhere, they ought to be able to find the money to put those things in place.
Anything else? Okay?
So I did, that number of 114 school incidents jumped out at me also, and I circled Menlo-Atherton High School of 35 of those incidents. I have two grandsons that go to Menlo-Atherton, and I'm there a lot. And I see our police officers there almost daily. And I know that we have cut our SRO, Student Resource Officer, over there. And I was just, would like to ask our chief or Joe to maybe comment on how we might be able to get that back. And because I don't know if everybody realizes this, but every day that school is in session, there are more children coming into our boundaries than there are residents of this town. We have under 7,000 residents from the 2010 census. We have over 7,000 schoolchildren coming into the boundaries of Atherton, and our police officers have to manage this. So I think that's, and then Selby Lane. Is there any way that we can put a SRO, and would that help at all?
Yeah, an SRO would help quite a bit. And the numbers that you see here are actually very typical in terms of the distance between the amount of response we do to each school, meaning that we really go to Menlo-Atherton High School and to Selby Lane School far and away more than the other schools. What we're looking at doing, because it's kind of a two-way process, we can't force ourselves on MA. MA's campus with the school resource officer boils down to, they're going to need to want to partner up with us to do it. But what we'd like to do, just looking at past trends, is have somebody that can go to all the schools, and they would spend most of their time, based on what you see here, realistically at Menlo-Atherton High School and at Selby Lane School because that's just where the biggest need is.
So that jumped out at me. Thank you for bringing that up. I also, in the police report on page 6 and 8, you've listed all of the training classes that our officers have gone to over the month of September, and it's pretty impressive. But maybe in the future, you could tell me what those initials mean so that I can understand what courses they're taking. I guess my question is that we want to make sure that we're training for our town and its issues and not training for skills which may be unnecessary for our town. There's more specific to our town and not, you know, esoteric or exotic training skills for like downtown Oakland or San Jose.
Sure.
Is that kind of what the focus is?
Yeah, and you know, we do monitor what training we send people to, and they go to training that is applicable for the town of Atherton. We won't send somebody to, I mean, you know, they offer border control classes. There's all kinds of courses out there, but we really try to keep it specific to what we're going to run it to here.
The only other question I have has to do with the Public Works Director. So maybe I can ask Mike this. It looks like we're a quarter of the way through the budget, and we've only, for maintenance and street maintenance, that we've only spent about less than a quarter of our budget amount. I guess that's good news, that we're not spending all of our money, but are we not doing as good a job as we should be doing, like along El Camino and keeping the shrubbery cut back for safety? Safety issues for pedestrians and bicyclists that do walk along that shoulder in El Camino. It gets really crowded. I know that I see bicyclists trying to bike up El Camino and with all the overgrowth of the ivy, and it pushes them onto the road. So I know I brought that up before, that I just feel that we really need to be diligent about that.
With respect to the budget, you know, actually being about 22.5% spent, as we're at 25% of the year, is about where we want to be, given that we haven't hit the winter months. And also, what we have, what's in the budget, is actually a little more than what we were planning on spending from a scheduled maintenance standpoint. And again, to anticipate, you know, just in case there are the unanticipated things that happen during the winter, we'd make sure that we have adequate budget to cover that. Your comments regarding vegetation on El Camino real is very well taken, and we will make sure that we, you know, stay on top of that. And that is work that we do get reimbursed for, Caltrans.
Okay, that's good. The only other question is kind of a policy question, and I don't know, maybe the city manager can ask, tell me. I had a resident who asked whether or not they could maintain a triangle that is obviously, it's like where three streets meet, and there's a public triangle of vegetation of the tree. They want to plant. They want to take over and make it pretty in front of their home. What's the policy on that? I couldn't answer that. And I told them to call you directly. Is that what I should do?
Yes, and I'm not sure if there's an existing policy in existence here in Atherton, but what you're describing is something...